The Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 19, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins? Trustee Erins?
Do you yell? I'm in the shower.
Trustee Erins, are you here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I've left the meeting.
We need you to vote present.
Are you present for the Committee of the Whole Meeting?
No, I'm, I have to go.
Okay.
Okay. Erins absent. Cameron?
Here.
Carbinero?
Here.
Dany?
Yes, here.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Well, Adam, we have this evening for our Committee of the Whole Meeting is under planning and zoning Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one rather lengthy item, the zoning ordinance update in chapters two and five. Jim, I have, I have a couple of questions, but I was hoping you could give us an overview and then we'll circle back with anything specific that we have questions on.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. The chapter two and five of the zoning ordinance had to be, some of it is housekeeping issue and some of it is in our continued attempt to do a revision of the entire zoning ordinance. You have seen a couple of chapters. We've done four so far, plus the sign ordinance, which is five, and we've tweaked the industrial business park ordinance, so we have six. This is the seventh chapter that we're, we have. It's really the residential district section of the ordinance that has to do with the uses, the bulk requirements, how residential development in the zoning ordinance is, is perceived and regulated. Previously, in our zoning ordinance, it was roughly eighty-some pages. Each residential district was defined and reiterated and you just changed the size limits and then the bulk regulations and everything was repetitive through the ordinance. So in each, in other words, you had the state, suburban residential, multifamily and those types of things were all done and you, there was some redundancy. What we did through painstaking effort is to condense that into tables and charts and make it more user-friendly and eliminate a lot of the pages of the existing ordinance. Couple of the policy or more pertinent things that are going to be in here are, first of all, the commercial vehicle section of the ordinance, which as you recall, a year or so ago, we had a problem with as we went to court to try to enforce a trailer, a junk trailer, I would call it, and the petitioner won at his appeal in the court in Rolling Meadows based on the license plate of his trailer. And it was a, it was my, in my belief, a misinterpretation of the license plate requirement by the judge, but needless to say, we eliminated that category. We worked with our police department, traffic division, our, in our zoning ordinance and our village attorney to change that commercial vehicle ordinance and trailer ordinance to still allow people who have commercial vehicles to use them properly in their yards, but to eliminate the types of trailers and some of the miscellaneous vehicles that we regularly, we regulate during certain times of the year. So that's one of the major issues. One of the other things is we also eliminated semi-trailers from being parked on driveways. The second section or second area that this is probably going to be most pertinent is regarding churches, religious institutions and places of assembly. Under, long story short, under laws that have been passed at the federal level and nationally laws, national law, all places of assembly must be treated equally. And so that you can't regulate a church, which is a place of assembly, any different than you can a banquet facility or a gymnasium or any type of places of assembly. What we did here is we separated them into large places of assembly and smaller places of assembly and we treated them equally. And the only difference is that if you go to a larger place of assembly over 10,000 square feet, you would need a special use. A smaller one, all places of assembly would be permitted or special uses in the various districts, but we treated them equally. And that's based on the law that, of the land, so to speak, and it's, they refer to it as RILUPA, but it's the Religious Land Use Something-Something Act. And Brian knows the acronym, but it's the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. So that was a struggle to get to that point, but we did. Our previous ordinance was not accurate and proper under that law. And the third item is something that was approved back in 2014, which was our impervious surface regulations, and we incorporated those impervious surface regulations in, to each individual section of the residential districts that have, that, that we deal with the impervious surface. And finally, there were a number of definition changes, which is chapter two, which we had previously approved. We made changes and adjustments to those definitions and added some definitions. That and a short version is what we did. I put the charts that condense all those pages up on the board. We've got the bulk, the previous, the use chart is the first one, all the different uses in those residential districts. This is the bulk regulations and setbacks for all the different residential districts. Again, for the multifamily districts, the bulk regulations, and then just the last one is the continuation or finalization of those bulk regulations. So that's where we're at. It is before you, prior to hopefully moving it on for a public hearing on the text amendment in front of the zoning board of appeals. I would entertain any questions.
Okay. Let's start on page two, which is table 5-1, uses in residential districts. The very bottom line, we're talking about utility towers, cell towers. Cell towers as special uses in the E, the R1, R2 and R3.
Yes.
I, I don't think cell towers strike me as a special use in any residential district. I mean, that's just my feeling. All right, so if we, if we pass a special, and I know Brian, I, I know, I'm wearing a different hat, so it just seems to me that if we pass, if we say that something is a special use, then legally it's a legislative determination that that use is appropriate for that zoning district. So sitting here, I don't feel that cell towers are an appropriate use in, in those zoning districts. Now, if a cell tower company wants to come in here and, and, you know, and pitch the location of the tower in a residential district, we'll give them their due process. We're not going to, you know, erect any barriers to them, but I just, I don't think that it's a special use.
The problem, if it's, it's either permitted or special or it's a prohibited use, so our ordinance says if it's not
Right.
...a permitted use or a special use, then it's a prohibited use. And cell towers on a federal level, you know, their federal laws are eroding our zoning ordinances when it comes to cell towers. And it seems that the crux of the cases, where they come down, have to do with their ability to provide coverage. And in the old days, everyone had landlines and a few cell phones. And then we had one come up at a horse farm down off of South Bartlett Road and hired experts to prove, you know, coverage issues. And the expectation now is people have gotten rid of landlines, use their cell phones and want to have connectivity and a good cell signal in their basement. So they, they need to have them, they claim they need to have them at more prevalent places, hence we put them on our water towers because it's high, tall, and those are sometimes in residential districts. Sometimes they're on land zone, public land, but oftentimes they're in a neighborhood and on those towers. But I hear you, but I, so we tried to limit it to the larger residential. You are right that once you make that legislative determination that something is a special use, it requires a top standard to turn down a special use, courts say, well, that's a permitted use, but to just say no, you know, you, it's this trade-off on, on the signal. And the federal legislation is trying to take that away. So if we limit it to a few districts, they at least in theory go through the special use process. The standard for a special use, it has to have some extraordinary ramification or cause an additional problem that another special use in that same district wouldn't. It is a tough standard, but, so that was the thinking, rather than just outlaw them, you know, that's...
Where else are they permitted under the ordinance? Or where else are they a special use under the existing zoning ordinance?
Most of the time, we treat them as spe, it's the height regulation.
Okay.
And we have them, as Brian said, we have them on top of water towers. There are some on top of comed poles that are in residential districts and, and field lights in park, you know, lights for the...
So in a commercial district or an industrial district, you're going to treat it as a height issue and not as a use issue?
That's generally how we have treated it in the past.
Okay. Does anybody else have strong feelings on this?
It sounds like the height thing is in the residential as well. You said it was in...
The, where we, where they have been placed primarily in the residential districts in town are on our water towers. And we have given our water towers a height allowance as, as, because they're all over, you know, 40 feet or whatever a house is, and so the cell tower kind of fits in that height re...
But there's limited space on our
Right.
...water towers. And they can have a, an area of poor reception and if I'm not wearing this hat, I agree with you.
Is there, is there an area of poor reception in Bartlett?
They all claim that they have some.
We have some gaps. We've, we've done when, when Brian, as Brian talked about that state residential district where we had the big one put, proposed, there was an analysis and then our consultant did an analysis and found some gaps of coverage. And that was a couple of years ago. We haven't done it recently, but they always approach Dan and, and Brian about adding new equipment and new locations. So there's probably, you know, it's different companies and there probably is gaps occasionally.
There are technology changes all the time. Then they talk about shorter towers more prevalent versus a big tall tower, which is an eyesight, an eyesore. Yeah, I think it's a little problematic to just say none in residential districts across the board, given that the federal law is going to look at the gaps in their coverage. I mean, that'd be the standard they'd look to and trump our zoning ordinance. So if we try and limit it to a few, then we, I feel we have a little stronger argument to say, well, you know, they have to do a site suitability study under the federal law and show that they've looked at others. And so you don't want to, you know, most of our industrial is out on the west side of town where you'd want it, but that isn't necessarily where they need it.
Right, okay.
So that was the thought process. I don't disagree with you.
So no one else feels strongly on this?
If there's gaps, I would just, this is the first I've heard that we have gaps in coverage in Bartlett. I've heard maybe in Iowa there's...
Originally, there were, the law was if anybody had a gap, you know, I mean, the argument was just because one provider had a gap doesn't mean we have to put up a tower. And then they started saying, well, even if the one, of course, the cases started holding that even if one has a problem. But they do a lot of sharing and co-location and things, so...
I could see that being a safety issue then if they can't get access to communication?
Well, their idea of what's good coverage and what we may think might be something different, you know, but sort of the demand of the public has sort of changed what that is and, you know, the prevalence of cell phones and people expectation, they have a signal in their basement. You know, that was what came up when we had the issue at the horse farm. And then we worked toward trying to get them relocated on the park district property instead of that location, sort of tucked behind trees, just a little further to the south. And ultimately, the compromise was add another one to the very top of the circle.
Okay.
Water tower, and they never built it actually over fight, fighting over indemnification issues and it was US cellular and they sort of went out of the park, so...
Okay. And Trustee Dany, you, were you expressing an opinion on the antennas or...
I just wanted to say that, you know, the technology is constantly changing, as we talked about before, and kind of like the idea of the special use because that gives us all an opportunity to look at that. And, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to happen in five years, 10 years from now. And maybe in some, in some instances, it may be beneficial that if we do have to have some type of a cell tower, so to speak, you know, in an ER1, at least under a special use, we have a chance to look at it and make a decision based on that.
And we, as a staff, then when they come in and they tell us that, push them for a stealth tower, look at ball field lights, you know, put them on top of that, anything that's not a standalone tower. Can I guarantee that that's always going to work? No, I can't. I don't know. It's kind of case by case, but the thought was, don't just outlaw them altogether because then they have limited spaces and they've got a stronger argument saying, you know, it's just stuck on the west end.
All right, so then let's change gears. Page four, section 10-5-3, special requirements in residential districts, paragraph, subparagraph A, commercial motor vehicles. And there's, there's some red throughout this entire section. And I want to make sure that I put this question to Jim and to the chief. Yes, obviously, we've, we have some issues regarding alleged vagueness, ambiguity in the, in the, in the ordinance. Gentlemen, are you both comfortable with this phrasing? So this isn't going to be an issue where we're looking at a, a commercial vehicle and saying, well, gee, what kind of plate should it have?
That's why you have to look at chapter two where the definitions are, and I spent a lot of time on it to get to the wording here.
Yeah, but, and I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable though.
We spent extensive time reviewing the state vehicle code with our traffic division and input by the police as well as our code officers, and this is the language that after we did all that, that we came up with.
Okay. And then the chief gave me a thumbs up, so I'm going to take that as a good sign. And then finally, page five, the very last subparagraph F, site plan review. So if somebody comes in for a building permit for a multifamily or non-residential use, they're going to have to go through the site plan process. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So just, you know, indulge me a little bit as we kind of talk through this. What if somebody was coming in with a signed permit? Would the signed permit trigger the site plan review requirement?
No.
Okay. So not signed permits. So if somebody was running a, a non-residential use in residential district, legal non-conforming use, and their, their water heater goes out, they're going to have to come in for a building permit and it's going to trigger the site plan review?
No. It's intended for, it's intended for if you had townhome development or if you had a park-type use or something like that, or if you had a, a church or a place of assembly, those would have to go through site plan review in the, in the residential districts.
Okay, so that's, those are my questions.
I have a couple of questions as well, gentlemen, need a little clarification, especially when it comes to the revised ordinance for the churches. As is stated here on the opening, one of the opening pages, that churches would be now classified as religious institutions and would be regulated the same as places of assembly since they have comparable impacts. Are we not regulating them currently in any way?
Yes, we are regulating.
We do. Probably over-regulating.
That's the problem.
It's what we do.
Well, the concern I have is, is you've brought up a couple of items, parking, noise and traffic. And so as I was thinking about things, is that it could be easy for someone to say, that church is really too noisy, just because they don't like the church or the property or they're not religious in some way. And so they say, they're making too much noise. Now they come to the village and they say, I don't like the fact that that church is making too much noise. Is that an issue that we could have or is it something we need to be involved with? Is it, I mean, I don't know, I was just thinking about things.
I think it's more when you're citing new uses and that what we have is that we were treating churches different than other places of assembly. So like the banquet facility that's been proposed, we have to treat that banquet facility like if we had a new church. They would have to be treated equally. And I think all of them, and I think the reason is all of them can generate noise, all, all those places of assembly can generate traffic, can generate congestion, and so our previous ordinance was not treating them equally. And I think that's the, the intent of the law is you have to treat them equally. So we still get noise complaints from the churches and we still get noise complaints from large places of assembly, but under the new ordinance, we're going to treat them equally, how we handle those.
We also had some inconsistencies. You'd have one district where it'd be a permitted use, another a special use, and then it might be a more dense, you know, SR, well, that's not a good example.
But it wasn't treated...
They were just a little inconsistent when you looked at them.
But you, you can get those complaints.
And there are cases, City of Evanston case, where they just made it a special use, churches a special use in every district, and the courts have said, can't just make everything a special use. There should be some logic, some, you know, so an ER1 is going to be different than some other district. And we don't have them as permitted uses in some of the more dense, smaller districts.
I just didn't want to see the village get put in the midst of some sort of...
Well, people, if they don't like it, it's usually before it's built, so they, everyone anticipates that there will be this problem or that problem, and they will raise that and say to you as a board, we'll make the decision, there'll be too much noise perhaps.
But I...
And ultimately, you'll make the decision based on whether you think it will or it won't, based on the evidence that they present to you. But people will make that argument, whether it's a banquet facility or a church, where you have to get in...
You'll often see it as a banquet facility before you'll see it as a church because that's coming up soon. And they're going to make that argument that you just stated, Trustee Cameron.
I think this law actually makes it less likely that we would be involved with dealing with a church that was making too much noise or had a parking issue. We have had some neighborhood church issues where people went ahead and had church services on Sunday morning in their home, Thursday nights, and unless it is, you know, parking over their sidewalk or blocking things, this says, we need to treat like that, like a church.
Okay. I just wanted to have clarification on that. Second thing I had a question on, and it was on page four, under the agricultural part of changes. It's quoted here that all accessory structures and land use for the shelter, feeding, keeping, propagating and culture of poultry, bees and livestock shall be, shall be a minimum of 100 feet and so on and so forth. My question is, it seems restrictive from the standpoint of just poultry and, and bees. And there are towns around here that are making efforts to have pilot studies. And Elgin, for instance, I think has a pilot study or, or ordinance in place that allows certain amount of residents to have chickens without a rooster, if I recall. I'm sure there are other towns around that have that as well. And as far as bees go, I think it's Hanover Park has a designated area for beekeepers to come and put their bee hives up. And, you know, I, I just think it's...
This is regulating it on someone's yard and worrying about the neighbors.
Well, even then.
But so we're talking about 100 feet. Well, we've had the problem and didn't have a restriction. And neighbors were unhappy that there would be that many bees in close proximity to little kids. So that's where the 100 feet came from.
Well, that's kind of a, that's a weak argument when it comes to bees and the, and throughout the world. You need bees for pollination. Without bees, we don't exist.
Well, we're not outlawing bees. We're outlawing the, you know...
We get requests for backyard chickens, backyard apiaries, all those types of things. We did not have bees within, this, this section of the ordinance is basically the same as it was before, except for the few things that are added in red. If you wanted to change the ordinance to allow for chickens and bees in closer proximity, we can do that. But this, as Brian said, this is to regulate, we have smaller yards in certain areas and people want to keep bees and chickens in those smaller yards and...
I would certainly like to see some input from other towns, what other towns around the area have, have been doing.
We've done some research in the, the chicken area, so to speak, because that seems to be the one we get the most requests. And some towns that have, have chicken ordinances that allow them, as you stated, they don't allow the rooster, but they have to be kept in
Right.
...heated, enclosed, in, in an enclosed yard and a heated structure with running water and electricity.
Would we get into, would we get into discrimination problems without having a rooster? Is it...
You know, so far that one is not...
Wouldn't get fertilized, eh? Exactly, about it. But nonetheless, I just think it's...
Beekeeping is another thing that's becoming more prevalent in, in urban areas.
Absolutely.
I, I, I agree with you. It's just that we didn't really have any regulation and the few that we had were in close proximity to other homes and we did get some complaints.
I just think the villages that are looking at doing things like this are progressive. They're looking at ways to bring in other types of food, hobbies, and you need these things.
Diseases?
Here again, I, I hate to see when government comes in and starts telling everybody, you can't do this. And why can't you do it? Well, because we just don't think it's a good idea.
The, the few instances where people are, have been keeping chickens, sometimes they tend to be free-range chickens.
Yeah, you should see the pictures, Mike.
And they end up in, all over.
Yeah.
And geese.
And geese.
We've had... We've got plenty of geese already, so I, I would like, I would just like to have a discussion on this further about the towns. I know Elgin
We can do that.
Has, has an ordinance or a pilot study of some sort. I know that Hanover Park has something. I'm not so certain that St. Charles might not have something in place as well.
Tavia just passed one.
Yeah, and so the question is, is why are they forward-thinking more than we are? And I, I think we should be considering it.
And I think, I think Trustee Cameron brings up an extremely good point, and I think this is very restrictive, the way our, the language is written here. And I think we should look at different possibilities. And I think looking at other communities and what their practices are pertaining to this is kind of important.
Yeah, I, I think that it, you'll, it'll be a combination of a distance, reducing the distances and then requiring that you have those animals in some type of structure.
Or a certain zone.
And I have no problems with that.
And that, we can certainly do that. We, we have done some research on the chickens in the past to see what other towns are doing.
So we could have some information within a month or two?
Well, this does have to go to the zoning board for a text amendment, and we can get that information ready for them so they can have it, so that they know that that's your desire. And then, you know, when it comes back to you, they can have at least looked at it if you don't have a problem with that.
That'd be all right.
It looks to me like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was way more restrictive in the prior version where it says on lots not less than 10 acres.
Right, it used to be, it used to be basically agriculture, we used to have agricultural uses in, you know, I'm trying to think of an area, but we, like the Litchfield area, Sunset Hill Farms, that, that area had larger lots and that's what it was really restricted for. So we, we kind of made it... So we, we kind of made it a little easier, but still, we don't have that many large lots. And then the distance requirement is because of our experience with the bees being a little closer for comfort.
Have we, have we had anybody that's actually had beehives in the city?
Yeah.
In the village?
They have them.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind being myself someday. I think it's an interesting hobby, actually.
It's, I'm sure it's a great hobby, but unfortunately, where the one that was located was in proximity to somebody who had children with allergies.
They had black bears in their backyard.
And they did a very nice job of putting where the bees are and they enclosed it with a fence and everything. And it looks very nice, but it's in close proximity to somebody that has allergies.
Well, I'm thinking that if we're that, what did you, what did you say, Mike, about open-minded thinking? If, if we can pass an ordinance for no parking on two streets, that we don't have a parking problem, I, I think we can probably say, instead of two acres, maybe half acre to...
It, yeah, we can play around with the size and as they, we'll do the research on some of the other communities that are allowing these and bring some of that back to you.
Because I'm very disappointed, I only have 15 feet and I'm not going to qualify for the chickens or the bees.
Right. It's a tough one.
Buy some farmland, Vince.
I think, I think we're all pretty much in agreement. If we could find out what some of the other villages are doing and it, the, we could have the input from the ZBA and then bring it back, but I think it would be extremely beneficial.
I think it would be good information too, to find out how many two-plus acre lots we have in the village and kind of get an idea of where they're at, yeah.
There's a few, but not many.
Not many, yeah.
I have a question about impervious surfaces. And how often does someone come into the building department, want to put up a patio or a deck or a shed or whatever, and you guys say, sorry, you can't, you don't call all the time?
We, we do, we average about six a day that come in for sheds or patios or driveway extensions and...
Pools.
Or pools. And so we do our due diligence and look at them, and, you know, within a couple of days, we get them done. And I want to say that 85% of them are allowable. I mean, it's just the small lots that have built, you know, a sea of concrete that have the issue. And there's ways they can do it to obtain what they want to do, but they may have to get rid of or put some pervious pavers in versus impervious paver, so.
All right, thank you. I, I, I still don't understand why the pool is a problem. I would think that, yes...
You mean the above ground?
Right. I mean, I understand that it's not pervious, but at the same time, it's containing the water.
That was my argument with Jim, but Jim won.
It's, we're looking at it for the, the coverage of the lot. And the pad it usually has, there's a deck around the patio that kind of, or an in-ground pool with the patio. So we count it as imperv, as an impervious surface. Most towns do.
Yes, he's correct.
And I just have a whole problem with the whole impervious surface thing as well.
Well, in the older parts of town, that's where we experience that. And as you have that flooding issues and we've spent a lot of money in those, in those areas to build extra detention areas to cover that. So that's kind of the trade-off there.
Yeah.
And, and with our more ordinance, more restrictive ordinances on impervious surface in other towns, ours is fairly relaxed.
I think if we're going to, in reference to Chairman Ranky's comment, I think if we're going to have the planning commission, the planning and zoning look at this, can they look at the above-ground pools at least?
Sure.
And get some more conversation going on that? Because I, I agree with you on that. I mean, if you want to put an above-ground pool in your backyard and that's causing you not to, and we have to make it make sense, right, for people as far as I...
We could look at it.
We tell them they can only fill it up three quarters.
Yeah, you can only fill it up three quarters, so.
Got to be room for more water.
You have to have holes in the bottom of it, so.
Are they constantly running?
Yes, to drain into the other neighbor's yard.
We'll look at that.
That's your concern? Yes. Yes, it did.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Are we going to hold off on the public hearing then? Because we might make some changes to this and it might affect...
Especially the chickens.
I thought we'd go to the zoning board with, for the public hearing and their input with that information and bring it back to you.
Maybe we should probably hold off on the public hearing because we might make some changes to this.
There's a lot here, so I think I would anyway be more comfortable with having the zoning board's input and have it come back and then maybe do a public hearing after that.
Well, no, the public hearing is before the ZBA.
Before, yeah.
The public hearing isn't before you, it's before the ZBA. So it's either, you know, take your message and they'll incorporate those into a document that there's the public hearing on. And what you're saying alternatively is, let's see what those changes are, bring it back to committee, see those before it's sent off to the ZBA where the public hearing would take place. Either way.
I think they should get it, review it.
I like Trent.
If you want to make some changes, we'll review it and then send it back to them.
I like what Trustee Hopkins is saying.
If, how's, if we, the, the zoning board sometimes takes more than one meeting to look at something like this too. And we could have them give it an initial look, tell them what you're suggesting, and then if they don't, you know, then they could make recommendations on those areas and bring it back to you, and then we could hold the public hearing af, after that, if you want to do that.
We do that, right?
Oh, no, we go back to the zoning...
We have, we have two members of the commission here this evening. Maybe you can take it home and start on it?
I mean, we could get their input. And then, then if you're comfortable with their changes and what your input is, then we can go back to them with the public hearing. Because they sometimes want more than one meeting too to look at it.
Jim, is there any part of the proposed amendments that you would consider urgent? Because I'm sensing a little hesitancy, and I want to make sure that...
Only the commercial vehicles.
Only commercial vehicles? Okay.
I got that one.
Well, can we, can we take that out and have a public hearing on commercial vehicles?
You could...
And then that's the first thing that they can review?
Yeah.
And then if that's urgent and you think it needs to be addressed?
We could split it up that way. Give them the more, have the public hearing on a portion of it and then get their feedback on the balance of it on regards to chickens and the impervious surface and that type of stuff. And then get your, get their input, bring it back to you. And then they could always get the rest of it after you're comfortable with it.
I, I just was thinking that if we heard it first, the, what's coming, coming back to us first with what's going on with the chickens and the bees and that kind of stuff in other towns, then we'd have a better idea of what to expect when it did go to the...
That's what we do, is we get it to you folks first.
Could we do this? Does everybody agree to do this? Take the commercial vehicle portion, go the path that we're planning on doing with this, public hearing, ZBA, back to us, and the rest of it, give us some information and we'll do another committee, the whole meeting on the rest of it. That way we're splitting it up a little bit.
That makes sense.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right.
We could do that.
Yes, good idea.
That's a lot of stuff to talk about, bees and chickens and commercial vehicles and...
Mr. President, that's all we have for zoning and planning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Alan, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Led by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Cameron. With a quick please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Harry Banero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes, we are adjourned.
I wonder if they get hard-boiled eggs in the winter.
You city boys, city boys.
That's a plan.
I don't know if I really want to watch that, but I do.